Good evening. Welcome to the March 21st meeting of the Millis School Committee. I'll start by announcing this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 o'clock on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. As well as a roll call vote, my left Denise.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
I'm here. Superintendent.
Here.
Steve.
Present.
Jen is not here yet. Do we have a teacher representative?
Here.
Student representatives. Jody, anybody sign in for a concession?
No.
All right. Then we will go to action items. First item is consideration to approve the March 7th School Committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
It's given.
I make a motion to approve the March 7th School Committee meeting minutes.
Been moved.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Been moved and seconded. Turn of the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, with consideration to have third reading of revised policy 5.11.3.2, concussion policy.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalana.
I know that we move to do the third reading of the concussion policy 5.11.3.2.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. I can start.
Okay.
Mills, this is the head injury/concussion policy for extracurricular athletic activities. Mills Public Schools has developed this policy to address the prevention and management of head injuries and concussions in students participating in extracurricular athletic activities. It is in compliance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 111, Section 222, and the Company Regulations 105 CMR 201.000, Head Injuries and Concussions in Extracurricular Athletic Activities. Definitions. For the purpose of this policy, consistent with the 105 CMR 201.005, the following words shall have the following met meetings. Licensed athletic trainer, AT, means any person who is licensed by the Board of Registration and Allied Health professions in accordance with MGL Chapter 112, 112, Section 23A, and 259 Code of Mass Regulations 4.00, as a professional athletic trainer and whose practice includes schools and extracurricular athletic activities. Extracurricular athletic activity means an organized, school-sponsored athletic activity generally occurring outside of school instructional hours, under the direction of a coach, athletic director, or bandleader, including but not limited to alpine and Nordic skiing and snowboarding, baseball and basketball, cheerleading, cross-country track, cross-country track, fencing, field hockey, football, golf, gymnastics, horseback riding, ice hockey, lacrosse, marching band, rifle, rugby, soccer, skating, softball, squash, swimming and diving, tennis, track, indoor and outdoor ultimate frisbee, volleyball, water polo, and wrestling. All interelastic athletics are deemed to be extracurricular athletic activities. Concussion means a complex disturbance in the brain function due to a direct or indirect trauma to the head related to a neuro metabolic dysfunction rather than structural injury. Head injury means a direct blow to the head or indirect trauma to the head, including a concussion or traumatic brain injury. Scalp or facial laceration alone is not a head injury for purposes of 105 CMR 201.000. Parent means the parent or guardian or foster parent of a student. School-based equipment means a form or format that a school district or school develops in lieu of Department of Public Health forms, which at minimum include all the information required by the most current department form posted on the department's website. Second impact syndrome means a potentially lethal condition that can occur when a person sustains a head injury prior to the complete healing of a previous brain injury, causing dysregulation of cerebral blood flow with subsequent vascular engorgement. Trainer means a person who provides students who participate in an extracurricular athletic activity with health and fitness instruction, including but not limited to the fundamental skills of performance, strength, or conditioning, but who is not a licensed athletic trainer. Traumatic brain injury, TBI, means a complex pathophysiological process affecting the brain induced by traumatic biomechanical forces. TBI may be caused by either a direct blow to the head, face, or neck, or elsewhere on the body with an impulsive force transmitted to the head. TBI includes but is not limited to a concussion. Volunteer means an adult who volunteers as a game official, coach, assistant coach, team parent, physician, nurse, or in an authoritative role to assist students who are engaged in an extracurricular athletic activity. In addition, in this document and all related documents, qualified medical provider refers to a duly licensed physician, a licensed athletic trainer, AT, or nurse practitioner in consultation with a licensed physician, a physician assistant under the supervision of a licensed physician, or a licensed neuropsychologist, neurophysiologist, sorry.
Psychologist.
Neuropsychologist, I apologize. In coordination with physician managing the student's recovery pursuant to 105 CMR 201.011A. Qualified medical providers providing medical clearance for return to play shall verify that they have received department-approved training in post-traumatic head injury assessment and management, or have received equivalent training as part of their licensure or continuing education. For further definitions, please refer to 105 CMR 201.005. Training, as specified in 105 CMR 201.007, the Millis Public Schools Athletic Department shall require annual training in the prevention and recognition of a sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome, and will keep documentation of the training on file for the following people: coaches, licensed athletic trainers, trainers, volunteers, school and team physicians, school nurses, athletic directors, marching band directors, parents of students who participate in an extracurricular athletic activity, and students who participate in an extracurricular athletic activity. This training will be completed utilizing Department of Public Health, DPH, approved training materials or programs, prerequisites to participation in extracurricular athletic activities. Prior to a student's participation in extracurricular athletic activities, students/parents must provide the following documentation to the athletic department. One, annual documentation of the student's physical examination, which is considered valid per MIA rule if performed within 13 months of the start of the sports season. This documentation will be confirmed by the athletic department and kept in the student's health record in the school nurse's office. Two, prior to each sports season, a completed pre-participation head injury/concussion reporting form or school-based equivalent pre-participation form. The athletic department will review this information upon receipt, and any information indicating a history of head injury will be reviewed further by the AT and/or school nurse. The athletic department will also provide a copy of such information to the appropriate coaches. Three, a certificate of completion for any DPH-approved online course or signed acknowledgement that they have read and understood DPH-approved written materials, or attended a school-sponsored training at which their attendance was recorded. The certificate and/or acknowledgement are valid for one year. Four, educational materials on the dangers of opiate use and misuse from the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services and the educational materials from the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services will also be distributed in written form to all students prior to the commencement of athletic seasons. If the student fails, if the student/parent fails to provide any of the above information, the student will not be permitted to participate in the activity, tryouts, or practices until the above documents are submitted. If necessary, the athletic director or designee or the coach will contact the parent to attempt to obtain the required documents, even when the student has completed the training but the parents have not. If it is not possible to produce a certificate of completion from the online course, then Mills Public Schools will accept a written or electronic confirmation that the parent students have read and understood the DPH-approved written materials.
Okay. Exclusion from 4M reporting requirements. Any student who during participation in an extracurricular athletic activity sustains a head injury or suspected concussion, exhibits signs and symptoms of concussion, or loses consciousness, even briefly, shall be removed from participation immediately and may not return to participation that day. Evaluation and clearance by a qualified medical provider will be required in order for the student to return to participation. Parents will be notified promptly of the nature of the injury in person or by phone by whomever the injury is reported to, coach, athletic trainer, school nurse, et cetera, so that the parent can ensure that the student receives medical evaluation and treatment. This communication must occur no later than immediately following the activity in which a student has been removed from play for a head injury, suspected concussion, signs or symptoms of concussion, or loss of consciousness. The parent must also be provided with this information in writing by notifying the party whether paper or electronic format by the end of the next business day. Emergency medical services will be contacted, EMS will be contacted if the student experiences loss of consciousness, seizure, persistent vomiting, amnesia, significant alteration or deterioration in mental status, and/or significant worsening of signs or symptoms. If the AT was athletic trainer, right?
Yes.
If the athletic trainer is onsite anywhere on the Mills Public Schools campus, the athletic trainer must be notified of the injury immediately so that the AT can assess and monitor the students until the parent arrives, or if necessary, other medical attention via EMS is provided. If the AT is not onsite or the injury occurs at an away or offsite event, the coach must ensure that the parents are notified as above. The coach or their designee must supervise the student until the parent arrives or other medical attention is provided. The coach must also notify the AT about the injury as soon as possible and no later than 24 hours after the injury occurred. The AT and/or coach will communicate by the end of the next business day with the athletic director and school nurse that the student has been removed from activity for a head injury, suspected concussion, signs or symptoms of concussion, or loss of consciousness. The coach will also complete the report of head injury during sports season form or school-based equivalent, in parentheses, report of head injury form, and provide a copy to the AT and school nurse in a timely manner. This form may also be completed by the AT. If a student sustains a head injury or concussion during the season but not while participating in an extracurricular athletic activity, the parent shall notify the school as soon as possible and complete the report head injury form or a school-based equivalent, and submit it to the AT, school nurse, athletic director, and/or coach. Any pre-participation forms which indicate a history of head injury, as well as all report of head injury forms, shall be reviewed in a timely manner by the AT, student's coach, and school nurse, so as to identify students who are at greater risk of repeated head injury, and to allow for provision of appropriate care and follow-up for new head injuries. The Mills Public Schools may use a student's history of head injury or concussion as a factor to determine whether to allow the student to participate in an extracurricular activity, or whether to allow such participation under specific conditions or modifications. Communication and sharing of information concerning an athlete's history of head injury and concussion, recuperation, reentry plan, and authorization to return to play in academic activities will be conducted on a need-to-know basis consistent with the requirements of 105 CMR 201.000 and applicable federal and state law, including but not limited to the Massachusetts Student Records Regulations 603 CMR 23.00, and the Federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act Regulations 34 CFR Part 99. Graduated reentry to academics and activity. Each student who is removed from participation and subsequently diagnosed with a concussion shall have a written graduated reentry plan for return to full academic and extracurricular athletic activities. The plan will involve a school nurse, AT, the student's guidance counselor, and teachers, the student's parents, coaches, and the student's primary care physician, or other qualified medical provider in consultation with any other appropriate individuals, as needed on a case-by-case basis. The return to athletic activity will be overseen by the AT. The school nurse or designee will notify the academic teachers of the affected student/athlete and provide either written or email guidelines for concussion accommodation plans. The written plan shall include instructions for students, parents, and school personnel, addressing but not limited to: A, physical and cognitive rest as appropriate; B, graduated return to extracurricular athletic activities and classroom students as appropriate, including accommodations or modifications as needed (classroom studies as appropriate, including accommodations or modifications as needed); C, estimated time intervals for resumption of activities; D, frequency of assessments as appropriate by the school nurse until full return of classroom activities and extracurricular activities are authorized; E, a plan for communication and coordination between and among school personnel and between the school parent and the student's primary care provider, or the physician who made the diagnosis or who was managing the student's recovery. The student diagnosed with a concussion must be completely symptom-free at rest in order to begin graduated reentry to extracurricular athletic activities. The student must be symptom-free at rest with cognitive activity and during exertion in order to complete the graduated reentry plan and be medically cleared to play.
Let me help you out.
Okay.
Medical clearance and authorization to return to play. Each student who is removed from participation for a head injury or suspected concussion or loss of consciousness, even briefly, or exhibits signs or symptoms of a concussion shall not be permitted to return to play until they obtain a DPH post-sports-related head injury medical clearance and authorization form, head injury medical clearance form, or school-based equivalent, prior to resuming the extracurricular athletic activity. This form must be completed by a qualified medical provider. May only be completed after the student has been completely symptom-free and has completed their graduated return to academics and activity protocols. It must be submitted to the AT or AD, and will be shared between the AT, AD, and school nurse. The ultimate return to play decision is a medical decision that may involve a multidisciplinary approach, including consultation with parents, the school nurse, and teachers as appropriate. The AT will provide final notification and clearance for each student to the coaches, the AD, and the school nurse. These return to activity policies also apply to a student who is a current participant in an extracurricular athletic activity but sustains a concussion or head injury outside of said activity. Rules and responsibilities. The superintendent shall maintain or cause to maintain complete and accurate records of the district's compliance with the requirements of MGL 111.222 and 105 CMR 201.000. The school, consistent with any applicable state and federal law, shall maintain the following records for three years, or at a minimum until the student graduates. One, verifications of completion of annual training and receipt of materials. Two, DPH pre-participation forms of school-based equivalents. Three, DPH report of head injury forms of school-based equivalents. Four, DPH medical clearance and authorization forms of school-based equivalents. Five, graduated reentry plans for return to full academic and extracurricular athletic activities. The athletic director shall be responsible for the implementation of this policy and any accompanying procedures as it relates to students in grades 6 through 12 who participate in extracurricular athletic activities. Coaches, ADs, ATs, trainers, volunteers, and required as applicable to teach form, techniques, and skills, and proper protective equipment used to minimize the sports-related head injury, and discourage and prohibit students from engaging in any unreasonably dangerous athletic technique that endangers the health and safety of the students, such as using a helmet or any other sports equipment as a weapon. Students who engage in unreasonably dangerous behavior while participating in extracurricular athletic activities will be subject to the code of conduct, including forfeiture for games and personal sanctions and possible disciplinary consequences. Review and revision of this policy shall occur as needed in a minimum every two years. Participants in this review shall include, but are not limited to, the AD, AT, and school nurse. The Mills Public Schools head injuries/concussion policy for extracurricular athletic activities shall be made available on the Mills Public website, and should be published in the Mills High School Handbook, available at http.has.org/informations/school/handbook, and Mills Middle School Handbook, available at http/mss.org/informations/school/handbook. Information, necessary forms, and materials related to this policy may be available to the parents and students on Mills Public School websites, as well as through the athletic department. These forms will be translated to the parents with limited English proficiency, and the Mills Public Schools will make special arrangements for parents with limited English proficiency for the trainings. All coaches, trainers, volunteers, ATs, and others involved with Mills Public School Athletics are responsible to follow this policy and the procedures and protocols associated with this policy. Failure to do so will result in penalties, including, but not limited to, personal sanctions. These policies and procedures shall be made available to the Department of Public Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education upon request. The Mills Public Schools will provide the Department of Public Health an affirmation biannually by September 30th of every odd number of years that has developed policies in accordance with 105 CMR 201.00.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? I know that there were a couple of questions that we sent out to school council. One was on the liability and the idea of getting advance notice and knowing the history. Seems like the advice from council more leans to protecting against knowing what you should know, as opposed to knowing and then running the risk of kind of allowing a student to play. It was kind of a case-by-case basis, and based on his language, he used the word negligent. So I think a fairly high bar in terms of whether or not we'd be liable by allowing a student to play after following all the protocols and doing all that. So if there are no other questions, comments, I think the motion will be approved.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalana.
I make a motion that we approve the policy 5.11.3.2, the head injury/concussion policy for extracurricular athletic activities.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve calendar for 2017, 2018, and 2019.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The Teachers Association and the administration have all looked at the calendar as proposed, with teachers resuming school for two professional days on August 28th and 29th, students resuming school for two days in August on the 30th and 31st, having Friday and Monday of the Labor Day weekend off, and then pretty much the rest of the calendar flows as is traditional, with some early release days staying on Wednesdays. There's a full release day on October 6th before the Columbus Day weekend to allow families to maybe beat traffic and get an early start, and again, a full release day on January 12th before the Martin Luther King Holiday Weekend. We would then end school on June 14th if we have no snow days, and up to five snow days are scheduled for an ending of June 21st.
Anybody have any questions? I'll take a motion to approve.
I actually have one question, please, Mr. Chair. I see March 30th is an early release date, but I don't see it in the bottom there.
Let's see, March 30th. Right, we can add it. Oh, yeah, so we need to add the explanation. That's low attendance, eh? Is that Good Friday?
Uh huh.
Yep.
Mr. Sw.
I move that with the addition of March 30th as an early release date to the list of dates on the bottom of the schedule, that we approve the Mills Public Schools' calendar for the school year 2017.
Seconded. Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next, student representatives.
All right. Good, how are you? Adam Carrera's senior project is this Thursday on the 23rd, 6:30, in the high school gym. It's a student-faculty volleyball game. It's to benefit the Special Olympics, so it's for a great cause. It's $5 for adults and $3 for students. And then the school play, which is spam-a-lot this year, is dated to be March 31st, April 1st, April 7th, and April 8th. Those all start at 7:30, and they're in the auditorium. Then there's a Mills High School soccer game at Gillette. The tickets are on sale. They have to be bought by March 25th. Tickets are $23, and those tickets get you into the Ashland-Mills game, which is going to be in September at Gillette, and also a Revolution game, which is on Saturday, June 17th, at 7:30. And also prom tickets have started to be sold today, actually, will continue to be sold through April, I believe, at some point. Thank you.
All right.
There's Mills Music Day will be Thursday, May 25th. That involves music students from grades 4 through 11, and it's an all-day event. At Clyde Brown, there is the Grade 3 Recorder Spring Concert that will be occurring Tuesday, May 23rd, at 6:30 PM in the Clyde Brown cafeteria. Grade 4 Spring Concert is Wednesday, June 7th, 7:00 PM, at the middle school, high school auditorium. The middle school's spring concert is going to be Wednesday, May 31st, at 7:00 PM. Seventh grade science fair was last week, March 14th, and it was a great success. On April 24th at 9:00 AM, Mills will be hosting Margaret Peterson Haddix. She's an author. She's written two books, Under Their Skin and Over Their Heads. And if you wish to order a book and have it signed, they're asking for you to please order it by April 10th. The high school had ELA edcast today, and they will continue tomorrow. And Thursday mornings, students are encouraged to get a good night's sleep and eat breakfast. And then the girls' basketball team played in the state playoffs last week. They had another exceptional season, and they made it to the semifinal round of games. Spring sports at the high school have begun this week, and term four begins in two weeks. April 3rd is the first day of the new term, the fourth term of the year, and term three report cards will be handed out on April 7th. And last tailware white is still continuing to collect shoes if anybody wishes to contribute to our senior project.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Mr. President's report?
Yes. In your packets, you have a copy of the audit of the school year 2016 and the year report. There were very few findings. They mentioned three items that were perhaps reported on the wrong line, or in one case, they were reported on the correct line, but it doesn't match up with the school-town allegation agreement, so we need to update that, and some other very minor issues. So we're very pleased and appreciate the hard work of HOU or business manager on this. The, I'd like to ask John Angler, our Director of Operations, to plan up and give us some update on our warrants. We have three warrants that pertain to facilities, the roof, the auditorium, and the upgrade of bathrooms. So we'll start with the roof. I know Mr. Angler has, he will speak more in detail, but Mr. Phelps and Barbara Thistle, the Director of the Department of Public Health, and I toured Clyde Brown today to take a look at the small leaks we do currently have in the cafeteria, and a small leak in the offices of the PPS, the student services suite. They are minor, but there are some ceiling tiles that because of the snow on the roof and the few drips, there are some ceiling tiles stained, but we all, Mr. Angler's staff is on it, and it's recent stains, and there is no concern, but he will be swapping out those ceiling tiles. And as soon as the snow melts, we will once again patch those areas. So I'll let Mr. Angler speak to that more in depth.
Yeah, and hopefully we will find these leaks. I think, I bet you guys about a month ago, we talked about the issues we had back in January, February storm. Just recently, we've had some more snow, some more leaks have, as Nancy had mentioned, some more leaks have come about because of this. There's a couple in the PPS there, there's three or four areas that have nuked. We did have a vendor come out and repair as much as, I think they tried and got over 20 packets, and I think they took care of a good amount of leaks, but again, it's like a needle in a haystack. So what we're hoping to do is with this warrant is similar to what we did with the ceiling at Clyde Brown, with the shingles. We're proposing to do an overlay. Again, it's pretty much where you're saving your money on not ripping up what's there now. By ripping things up now, you might even come across some more issues that you might have. By putting this overlay down, it will go over the 400 something patches that have been taking place over so many years, and it should solidify any rain or any water that would be coming into. that should, that would be coming into, um, various areas I mentioned here, um, it's the areas of the cafeteria and the kitchen area and the PPS offices, some with the new and some bathrooms. So this would, um, again, it's just a rubber membrane. It would be sealed altogether with adhesive, it goes into detail here a little bit, and that should take care of any issues that we have there for Clyde Brown. I know that there's, there's, um, questions, you know, pending possibility of new building. But again, this will last, um, if the building doesn't go through, this should last us for a good 20-plus, 20-plus years. Um, we do have, uh, materials are 15 years and labor's 10 years. Um, it should put an end to any water filling into this area. Um, it just seems that this roof material is just disintegrating, and it's, uh, it's to a mining rate. So I'm not quite sure how many more patches we can actually do. Any questions?
Did you say there was over 400 patches?
So we took account, there's over 400 patches up on the roof.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Angler, so John, you were saying that this is a 15 years. This is just for a certain areas. This is not a whole roof. I just want to make it clear for the viewing public that this is a, a repair of a certain area. This is not a new roof replacement, nor will this extend the life of the whole roof for 15 years.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's about 16,000 square feet. It's, it's over our problem areas at the moment. It's the, uh, again, it's listed there, but it would detail, which would be, again, everywhere where we presently have a roof now. Um, it would take care of all of this.
The more permanent solution clearly is a new roof, a new building, but if that, at minimum, a new roof. This is, this is a repair of a certain area to go over the roof.
Correct. You have, you still have a lot more roof that we don't have issues at the moment, but, um, this hasn't even touched the gymnasium. The gymnasium has the same sort of roof, but there hasn't been that much, there's no air ducts or anything on top of the roof, so there hasn't been that much traffic up there to create any issues, whereas this roof has, uh, these two roofs, the PPS and the cafeteria, had the units on top and seemed to be deteriorating most.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any, any questions, comments? All right, I'll talk about the other two, each other one.
The other, uh, another article requested would be the, the enhancements of four public bathrooms, renovations. The four bathrooms, uh, originally we threw money, uh, we threw $20,000 together thinking we can do a lot more than what we can. Um, unfortunately, um, what we're focusing on at the moment with this amount of money is the two public gang bathrooms that are right outside the hall here that you pass on your way here, and the two single bathrooms that are along the superintendent's hallway. These four bathrooms are used mostly during all the events, either at the cafeteria, the auditorium, the gymnasium, or here in this, or here in the library. It's used by the public, it's used by guests of the public, um, so not only is it the Millis people, but also the people who come here from out of towns. And, um, the bathrooms have, uh, they have their original tile, they have their original flooring, they have their original fixtures. Um, so it is just flat-out dingy, and it needs to be enhanced to some point. Um, what we, similar to the roofs, I'm talking about overlay with the flooring as well. Um, this is a procedure that I have done at other facilities before. Um, it's worked out, and we have one that's 15 years old still, and it's working out well. What they do is they actually just take the, they prep the flooring, uh, as long as the floor is stable, which in all four of these areas they are, they prep the flooring and they cement, and they put the new tile right on top of the, uh, of the existing floor. Um, any areas that we really have some pitching, they can throw some more cement, and just so all the drains would work successfully. Um, there is, uh, with the, uh, with the flooring, um, it's not only, is it the tile flooring, but it's also the base of the, of the flooring as well. So, um, what we're recommending is to address these two gang bathrooms with the new tile. Also, uh, what we've tried at another venue, what I have experienced at another venue was an epoxy coating that we might, that we, that I would be interested in using the two single bathrooms, something where the expense would be, still be down. It's still enhancement of the bathroom. Um, and what that is, is prepping of the existing flooring there now by scraping it, by sanding it, and by, um, by priming it, and then this epoxy goes over it. It's, uh, it should mostly be used on cement, but what I've been told, as long as the flooring is stable, it will work on tile as well. So it might be something that we might consider using in other bathrooms if we have another opportunity doing such, but, um, this would be a nice test area to be, to use it. Again, I've, I've used it at my previous, uh, job. It's worked out very well. It goes down as an epoxy finish, um, it seals, it's very well to clean, it's very hard to, it doesn't chip, it doesn't peel, um, especially when it's, um, put down correctly, and I think it would just really make some of the bathrooms just pop.
Okay. And just so, again, for the, more for the viewing audience, but would you say the traffic at the previous place that you've done this is higher or lower than what we would have here?
Higher. So, um...
Just, yeah.
With a lot more, and it was an outdoor venue, um, so we use this at our, our public bathrooms. So it was a 19,000 NSC venue, um, so there's constant traffic flow going in and out on a, on a yearly basis. And, and at that facility, it also closes down during the summer, so it closes down during the winter, so it's been able to, it's been able to still adhere and work even with changes of the temperature and, uh, you know, heat during the winter time. So it's really a durable product. They're mostly used maybe on, um, you might have in garage floors, um, fire station floors. It's, it's, it's a really hard product that, um, again, it's, it's like a paint that goes down, and, um, and they actually throw this, this chip product in it that makes, uh, that gives it almost like a textural look as well. Um, so besides the two floor, I mean, the, the, when you first walk into the bathrooms, there's the two things that, uh, that would pretty much pops out at me and others is the flooring. Um, the walls can always, there's old tile that's on the, on the walls that we also have in our hallways, but it's harder to adhere to that, so unfortunately, I think we're just stuck with that tile, um, unless if at some point it wants to be ripped out and replaced, which would be quite costly. The other additions that we're hoping to put in into these bathrooms, um, again, we're hoping to get multiple bathrooms, but some of, uh, some of the partitions, um, especially in these lower bathrooms would, uh, could be replaced. Again, it's a product that I've used before at my previous employment. Um, they are not vandal-proof, nothing vandal-proof, but, um, when people write on them, it definitely comes off, it's easy to clean, it's easy to maintain, and if people do, do some, um, damage to it, you can actually sand this down and not even notice that, that there's an issue there. So, um, it's actually going with a plastic, uh, with a plastic, um, it's a hard plastic partition. They have been using at schools. Matter of fact, I went to school before, just before I brought them at the other venue. Um, they've held up fantastic, and the hinge and how they all work is, it works out really well, so. So besides changing the flooring and changing the partitions, um, we would like to, um, we'll probably, again, add some painting, um, anything that might be left, left over out of the 20,000, we'd, we'd like to maybe look at the fixtures. The fixtures are original fixtures, um, which could be replaced, and, um, again, with these numbers that we have here, I'd like to think that there might be some room to possibly help out and possibly hitting all four of these bathrooms, um, probably from top to bottom.
Mr. Chair. Can you say original for bathrooms, their original construction, and for the electronic original, what year are you referring to that's original?
Um...
Approximately?
I would, I believe it's 660?
Okay. So bathrooms are from the original 1960?
Correct. I believe in the superintendent's hallway that they might have two, the inner walls have the, the new tile, so the outer walls have been fine with the flooring, it's never been touched. Matter of fact, in those hallways, you'd see where, where they had bits of issues where they had to take out a chunk and replace the, the flooring there, which is a mismatch of tiles, and it doesn't look that appealing.
I understand, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on this one?
And then the, the last one is for 55,000, and that is for the auditorium renovation. Um, I think when I approached you guys a couple months ago, we were hoping to do this over a three-year span. Uh, we're just planning on just doing one year and see how, how it all works. We tried to touch base on as many things as we could. Um, the, the big issue that we have there now is it is a 400, 440-seat theater, and I believe we're missing about 30 seats now only because we can't, we can't buy, um, equipment or replacement parts for these, these seats. So by, uh, we're proposing to replace 45 seats, which unfortunately is only the first four rows, um, which would be roughly around the $17,000 range, but by doing that, that's going to help us cannibalize those chairs that we are taking out and hopefully get us back up to full capacity. Um, that 17,000 also, um, has the company not only replacing those seats, also going throughout the whole auditorium, checking all the seats, and professionally securing all of them. Besides the 17,000 for the seating, we would, uh, we've got some bids on the sound system. Um, as previously, uh, previously mentioned, I mean, between the seating, the sound, the electrical, and the lighting are the four areas that we're focusing on. The sound system, um, it accumulates to be about $12,350. It would bring us up to where our, uh, where we'd have enough wireless mics to, uh, to hold different venues, I mean, to hold different events. It also gives us the capabilities of, uh, of having somewhat of a state-of-the-art sound system in the facility. I do know that the auditorium is being, is the, gets used for various things, school committee, uh, town hall, um, also various events, um, school, uh, school productions, and this would, uh, this would enhance that as well. The, uh, to have down here the new video edition, um, we do have a, a video projector and screen there now. Um, it's not ideal for the time being, it's, it's a little outdated as well. Um, again, for 17, just over 17,000, we can have something that's actually, um, completely wired, something that's hung from the ceiling, and again, something that is just a, something that can be used for various, uh, for various things, whether it be through the school or, or rented out, renting the facility out for PowerPoint presentations, or some things of that nature. Besides the, um, video, the lighting, um, unfortunately, I don't have that, that much feedback yet. We did have someone come in. We do know that we have circuit breakers that we don't know where they go. We have empty spots, we have lights that just don't work, so there has to be some more investigation to be done before we can actually fulfill what we need and what we can repair. So we're not quite sure if it's unisimply repaired, if it's wiring, it just needs to be taken care of, so the additional money that we're asking for the 8400 and whatever money that's left over from the sound system and the seating and the, and the projectors is to hopefully help out with the lighting. Uh, we need to do some more investigating on that because, uh, it's the original wiring, and we want to make sure that, uh, that we can enhance, or we can use all the power that we have that's already established there on stage.
Yes, all right. If this is the electric, original, uh, electric and wiring in there, is there any concern that if we start adjusting it, there's any codes that we would be tripping? I'm just thinking, in all the discussions about building and starting repairs in Clyde Brown, you start tripping, you know, codes, and then you gotta start doing more work that you didn't necessarily think, just to make sure you're...
And that's, that's what I'm hoping the 8400 will also assist us in finding out. Um, I do know that, um, as far as the projector and the wiring for all that and the audio, that's all included, so that's all, whether it be brand-new runs or whether it can be used as existing runs there.
Okay.
But again, the electrical is still up in the question. I don't feel comfortable enough to actually, um, commit to anything on that nature at the moment because we're, we're still looking into it.
Mr. Chair, do we have any concerns with this being so old and you have to unplug things? Are there any fire safety concerns with this extremely old electrical equipment?
No. Uh, well, you know, extremely old electrical equipment, of course, it could be some sort of fire hazard, but I like to think that we don't have any issues here at the moment.
Okay.
It's not like we're having, we're popping circuit breakers. This is pretty much to help us out on, um, you know, copper wire is copper wire, you know, hopefully it's still intact, and our investigation will hopefully help us out.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Angler, haven't, um, haven't you just gone through a thorough recent building inspection, and the fire chief has also been through a couple times?
The, the fire chief and I have been through, um, the building inspection portion was canceled again today.
Oh.
And will hopefully take place sometime this week.
Okay, but all our systems are inspected every year?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Great. Thanks very much for your time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just on the, um, on the Clyde Brown roof, remind me, we spent under the operating budget, and then the moron at COVID replenishes that? Is that the...
No, this is an addition to what we've spent this year.
This is an addition to anything we've already, because we just voted a couple weeks ago.
Twenty-four? It was back in the...
We voted on two other repairs to the roof.
Right, we voted on one of these about not, about doing it anyway because we had to.
Right.
In addition to...
We talked about this a couple weeks ago.
The warrant.
So I thought we talked about it was an urgency, we had to do it, so we were gonna take it off the warrant list, but then...
No, we're gonna put it on the warrant.
Then we thought we were gonna replenish funds with it.
Put it on the warrant list, right, we were gonna put it on the warrant list, but that we needed to do it anyway.
Right, so we need to replenish the operating budget funds. So we have enough to cover, cover up other expenses. So my first question was...
I believe this year we've spent about $5,000, close to $5,000 on the roof repairs this year, just patching.
Well, the first repair was on the two wings where the blue tarp was, and that was the first part of, uh, early part of the year.
Yes.
That was in fall. And that was more than that, though, so...
Yes, it was.
Twenty, twenty-seven.
And then the five thousand we mentioned, and then now that's...
So did we, did we, um, have we sent up the money on, on, on the warrant that we, from a few weeks back? Have we requested that?
No, the only warrant that we've put forth is for the $58,000 for the...
But this is in addition to what we...
It is in addition.
Do we, we have another warrant for $58,000 up there?
No, the only warrant we have that's on the town meeting, that is an article for town meeting, is the $58,000 for the...
The one that we just talked about, too.
Right.
So nothing has gone up. That's it.
So I guess my question was, I'm sorry if I was unclear, when we previously discussed that we were going to send up, we were gonna fund it in an emergency manner, that we were going to send up a warrant to replenish that, we never did that, but this is something new that's cropped up, so we're going to try to fund this part of it.
No, I don't think that's correct. I think that, uh...
We, we sent it up on the list of warrants, was that what?
I remember a whole conversation that the roof was too important, we couldn't wait till...
Right, correct.
So we said, let's fund it under the operating budget, let's find out what it costs, and then we'll go to the town with a warrant to replenish the funds from the operating budget. And this is one in the same. This is, I don't remember what dollar amount was for that, but I'm sure we can fill that instead. Um, I just want to make sure.
That's what I'm trying to get...
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Is it two separate, fifty plus?
No, one.
Okay, so this is the one, then?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes. But just to be clear, we haven't done this work yet because we haven't been able to because of the weather.
Right.
So we haven't actually spent the funds out of the operational budget yet.
Right.
So there is nothing to replenish yet.
Right.
So we're going up with the warrant for this repair, warrant gets approved, we fund that way.
So Mr. Engler, is this something that we would fund before May eighth or twenty-second, whenever town meeting is?
If, if that's a possibility, then.
So we've approved that, I believe, at a previous meeting. We've approved the spend of those funds.
Correct.
Right, and it was just on his list, the exact.
So you have approval, correct me if I'm wrong, you have approval to spend those funds to repair that roof as soon as it's possible to do it.
Those are number one priority. And on two, seven, seventeen, we reordered the potential warrants, and we made the fifty-eight thousand repair of crack and holes inside CFB flat, which is our number one priority.
Right.
So what, Mark, what, what has gone to town hall at all?
That was, right, yeah, the full one.
So are we just going over these tonight, just to review?
Because we, because we didn't, when we went through these the first time, we didn't have concrete numbers with all the bids. So this is just a review of what we've already sent with the numbers that are more concrete.
So we sent the four must funds, the bus lease, the stabiliz, bus lease, stabilization fund, the computer lease, and medical, those went up.
Yep.
And then for the potential warrants, I don't know if we prioritize them for the town, or if that was just for our list, but our priority is the CFBA roof, number one. Curriculum, number two. Number three was going to be the backup storage servers district-wide. Number four was going to be the three-year plan of the middle school, high school bathrooms, which we talked about tonight, the first year. And then number five was going to be the auditorium project, which was what we're going, all right.
Yep, and these are, for those last two, this was year one of what would be a multi-year plan, because we discussed it being a multi-year plan, but we needed, we needed year-one values with year-one specific expenses, so that when we asked for it, we could say, this is what the funding would go for in the first year, it's a multi-year process, and we'll come back, but we could do, if they provide funding for these this year, it's not contingent that it's funded in multiple years going forward, it's, we can do the first four rows of chairs this year, if we don't get funding next year, then we just don't do the next four rows.
We're trying to phase the cost and the impact.
Right, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the narratives you have in your purple folders are more detailed with the updated numbers that Mr. Engler has now, so they can replace what's in your budget books, and we will also send them to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to replace the narrative of what's in there, now that we have more complete information.
All right, the next thing, just because we had, we talked about it at our last meeting, Nancy's just going to show us what ClearGov looks like with our stuff, and then we're going to get, she's going to set us up tomorrow with login information. What we'll be able to do is create, we will be able to play with the data and create our own. It won't be, we can't publish to live what people can see, Nancy has that capability, and so if we did design something that's not standard, and we wanted to put it out, she can do that through her administrative rights. But what we'll be able to do is obviously access anything, but we will have access to LinkedIn, that we'll be able to save it, and we can save our own reports, we can save our own data, but it just won't be visible to the public.
So we also, at the last meeting, we also discussed that we, as a group, would decide what gets published.
Exact, right, yeah, yeah, yep.
There is standard information that ClearGov has available for anybody and everybody, for each town in the Commonwealth, and it is data that comes from the Department of Education. So you can, it's a nice format, you log, or you just go to cleargov.com, you click on Massachusetts, and then you can search the town of Milis or by school districts. So if we go to school districts and scroll down, or you can do, use the search, the search bar wasn't working as well for me earlier, so you scroll down, you find the Milis Public Schools, click on that. This information that is available is still the most up-to-date information, is only two thousand and fifteen, because the Department of Education is slower this year than previously, previous years, and they don't have two thousand and sixteen up there yet. And it gives you a district snapshot of how many students, how many employees we have.
Could you click on the view more details for what, either the students or staff?
View more details.
Which one, either one?
For staff, this includes, it says, there's a small type, includes non-instructional employees as well, and it gives you a graph, students compared with employees over, and this is, over the years. There's so much good information, and they, they have a banner that we will be putting, posting on our website very soon, and it can either say Transparency Center, or I liked the title of Milis by the Numbers, and then underneath it Transparency Center, I think, so they're revising it a little bit for us, but that will soon be available on our website. You then have employee breakdown graphs, and whatever data point in here, you can compare Milis to the average. So here's teachers per student that we talked about, we are now at this, almost up at the state average of teachers per student, paraprofessionals per student, well below the state average. You can see where, you know, there, there's so many, number of guidance counselors, psychologists, et cetera, you can click anywhere and get more information on each of these categories. And this is obviously personnel, there's, you can go back to the financial overview of how much we spend, including all grants and aid that we get. Expenditure per student is interesting, it has a comparison group, and when you look at the details, you can view the analysis. This is a Department of Education comparison group, it has places like Cohasset and Old Rochester, and when you scroll down a little further, you see it lists them, for example, Cohasset has a much higher household income than Milis, but it has a similar number of students, Georgetown, Medway, so it gives you the household income and some comparison data there. You can also look at Milis compared to our surrounding community in the tech collaborative, and you can see that we are second from the bottom in terms of having almost the lowest per pupil expenditure, it's hard to see.
Can you scroll up a little bit so we can see that percentage?
The percentage.
I think we're down eighteen percent.
Oh, yeah.
Or eighty percent lower than the average in tech.
Stay there, and then scroll up to, so we are eighteen percent and lower than the tech collaborative communities, which are our surrounding communities, eighteen percent lower in our pupil expenditures, per pupil expenditures than those districts. So those are, you know, obviously districts that we somewhat compete with in terms of choice students and also employees, paraprofessionals, et cetera, that want to geographically stay working near their homes, or substitute teachers as well. There's just a tremendous amount of information, I thought there were a couple, just very quickly, a couple other areas that you might want to look at. This is back to the homepage, the district snapshot, and our financial overview, capital outlay, performance, and state aid. State aid is very striking, how much lower we get. This is the peer group from Department of Education, and then the state average.
That's the DART peer group there?
Yes. So we are, our state aid is much, much lower, I'll click on the detail here, we're fifty percent lower than similar districts in how much state aid we get, fifty percent less.
We didn't set up the DART, the DART was set up for us, or did we have to go?
Right, no, we don't, the DART districts are in the Department of Education website.
No, I get that, but I'm saying, so when they pulled the two thousand and fifteen, they took a snapshot and said this would, those were our DART schools that, yeah, because they change, they can change year to year. So they, so we're not manipulating that at all, that is the dump from DSES, D E S E.
Right. And so that, that, when I looked at that, it was very striking, you can see it went up a little bit in two thousand and eleven, and that was stimulus money, that was the one year we got some stimulus money, but other than that, we are well below, fifty percent lower than similar districts.
And why is that, it's based on some wealth and income indicators, right? Why are we so much lower?
Yeah, here's the analysis. So fifty percent, this is the DART, the DART districts, here, I'll go up a little so you can see them.
What are the other options?
We have to, we have to look at it. We can do tech, we're forty-six percent lower than the tech districts.
And that's Meda, Colston, Needham, Walpole, Upington.
Canton, Norwood.
Yeah, Norwood, Westwood.
Westwood. And then ClearGov also has a default group that we're thirty-eight percent lower than, and they tend to be.
So that's West Bridgewater, Sutton, Uxbridge, Abington, Douglas, Hope Dale, Maynard.
Those have been DART schools, those have been DART schools in the past.
Yeah.
Yes.
So any way to slice it before you could just pull up.
So this is state, is this state aid just to the schools, or is state aid to the town?
It comes to the town, chapter seventy money comes to the town and then gets split by the sixty-five thirty-five.
So that's all aid coming to the town, that's not, that's not subject to sixty-five thirty-five?
No, that's school, chapter seventy-eight.
So that's what we get?
That's what the town, so.
Here, I'll go back.
Well, just, but just to be clear on how, so, an element of all, of the total state aid that Milis gets is chapter seventy for education, but Milis, unlike some other places, takes all of the state aid that comes in and puts it in the entire pool of funds available, at which point, taking off some off the top expenses, then distributes sixty-five thirty-five. There are, there are places where the chapter seventy money is specifically goes to school for, so this is the, this is all of the education money that comes to Milis.
And then subject to a sixty-five thirty-five split.
Yeah, but so is everything else.
Why are we so much lower than everybody else?
I, I will have to analyze that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot, I mean, that's, that's huge.
And it's just based on a state formula, it's not anything that we can change, as far as I understand.
We have historically been one of the communities that would have benefited from the formula had they funded the formula, and they deviated from the formula, so there is, at the state level now, talk of revisiting and funding the formula again, but when the recession hit, they stopped increasing communities such as Milis, increasing our state aid, and instead went to a flat per pupil, and all we've gotten for the past few years is, past couple of years has been twenty dollars more per pupil, or twenty-five, when Governor Deval Patrick, the last couple of years, his administration, we got fifty dollars per pupil, so it, but they're not increasing Milis' state aid to close the gap for us, and it is a complex formula.
So is it safe to say when we've gone down in student population, so that's, therefore we've lost that much?
That's a big, that's a big problem, because the, the way, the formula has a seven to ten thousand dollar per student variable cost to it, so, and back in the, you know, eight, nine, before the recession hit, and part of why we got such a good chunk of stimulus money was our population was going up, and so the variable cost, so for every student we were getting, you know, another seven or ten grand. Well, now, we're, we're losing that because our population declining, even by, you know, thirty kids over twelve grades, the, the funding per student, the total dollar value was pretty significant when you talk about fixed and variable costs, because our fixed costs, the cost of running a school doesn't decline by seven thousand dollars simply because one kid leaves.
So we're not going up to the regular population, and plus, we're losing on, on the, on the population we've lost?
Right, so we're getting.
We're hit both ways.
Yeah, so, because you, you'll see, the governor's budget and the, and the state's budget the last couple of years has put in a fairly significant increases in, in education funding, we're not seeing it come to Milis because of our population, and that's, you know, but to be fifty percent under, in three different groups.
Right.
Huge.
Was it fifty across all three?
Well, it was fifty, forty-six, and thirty-eight.
Yes, that's.
What was the thirty-eight on, the DART?
No, the defaults, they're default.
Let's use the DART and the tech.
But it's, yeah, and so back, as I was saying, when they were adjusting the formula, what they were doing was, they were trying to adjust some inequities, the problem with it was, in order to provide one district with more money, they had to take money from another district. And so when the recession hit, they stopped doing that because of the impact it was having on the districts it was losing on.
Nancy, could you go down a little bit, just to the, going to college, no, it's an add, now that doesn't come out of DSE, is that something that we can add data ourselves?
Yes, I believe we can go in there and add.
We have a success story on that, we should.
Yeah, we track that. And also, you know, we, we actually have many years higher than ninety-four percent that graduate. If, that particular year, I know we had a student move out of state, and when they move away from us, it doesn't get captured as ever having graduated. So two students for us that year had a big impact on our percentage, but we do track these things very carefully. Under, I wanted to just show you one more thing, there's a tremendous amount of information, so if we look at expenditures per student. If I can find it again, there, they had a breakdown of instructional services, and we, of our total expenditures, we actually had a much higher, I can't find it now, a much higher percentage spent on instructional services rather than facilities, operational, et cetera.
Could you click on one of those charts?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Maybe it was here, there. Let's see if.
Looks like it should double.
Figuring out how to use that.
Oh, here it is. View this.
Expenditure detail.
Detail. There it is, yeah. Thank you. So it's a little small, but this dark blue over here is what we spend. 60% of our budget goes for instruction. And that was 6% higher than similar districts. So that, you know, I think is a good thing that we, you know, really invest in students and their instruction. So you can then view a breakdown of that and get even more detailed about how much goes for.
Where's the, where's the big blue one?
The big blue one is classroom and specialist teacher salaries. So there's other teachers, other paraprofessionals and other teaching services, professional development, guidance and testing. And all of these categories come from that end of year report that our business manager submits to the Department of Education and they extract these percentages.
Can you go out to the revenue? Could you go back out to the first screen where we have expenditures in the revenue?
Expenditures, yeah.
Are we able to dig into how much we spend on special education versus other?
Yes. For example, I, I know when we get there, we spend 24% higher than similar districts on out of district tuitions, not so much on overall special education.
So if we had space, we may be able to offer more in-house.
And some of it is scale, economy and scale. We may have one or two students whereas.
Right, now the district may have three or four.
Which could be $8,000 or $100,000 a year.
Right.
So Nancy, could you go back out to that first screen where we had the charts?
Sure. And I'm happy to, let's see. If I can go back.
That one?
Nope. Go all the way out, I want to look at the revenue.
That's still expenditures. Okay.
So now the top one is, or you go down scroll a little more and then says, look at expenditures and then view funding source.
Funding source detail.
What does the big blue say?
Municipal contribution is 61%. State aid is 25, 25.6%.
Do they, do they, do they show what we look like compared to others based on this?
There you go. We're 2% lower in municipal.
No, but I think that's based on the per, per student. Or what is that negative 2 saying?
It says 2%, well, per student is 84, 45, which is the municipal contribution. That's 2% lower than similar districts.
And you can view that as, so this is the DART.
So we're below the state average.
There's, state aid is there. Cohasset is obviously higher in their municipal contribution. We can also then change it to, well, here's tech collaboratives.
35%.
35% under what?
Below the tech districts.
With all due respect, they have Dover, they have Sherburne. I mean, let's, we have some.
This is based on population too.
But Walpole. Here's Walpole, Meda, you know.
Where are we?
We are in Kabada. Holliston is right above us and then state average and then Walpole.
So we're 2% lower. Does it give us, we're on state, state funding?
So I guess.
No, 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 not in this one. No, no, go back.
If we go back.
I mean, I guess Dover has more kids, but that's why, right? And why would the state give more money to Dover than they give to Milis other than just the count of students?
That's, that's municipal.
That's the municipal funding.
Municipal.
That's what we want to look at. That's when we're going back. We want to look at the state funding. So just go back.
Funding sources. This one's state aid?
Yep.
Okay. Goes back to 93.
So our state aid is 7% higher per student than similar districts.
That's interesting.
What's missing is data.
Now, that's for these DART districts.
Which are still well below the state average.
And then the ClearGov default, I think is a, a good group because when I look at Sutton and Maynard and Douglas and Hope Dale and Uxbridge, those are, and West Bridgewater and Littleton, those to me seem like much more similar districts than the DART districts, which include Mendway next door, which is twice our size.
So what's interesting is our total funding is 50% less. Yet per student it's only 4% less. So we're not getting, so.
Yeah, is it getting diluted before it hits us?
No, we don't know what it is. I mean, the money comes in, we split it.
Exactly, right.
Split it 65-35.
Right, because if you did it by student.
There's no secret there.
Right.
No, we don't, we don't do the 65-35 on students. We do the 65-35 on revenue after we take off the must funds.
Right.
Which is insurance and a couple of other little things.
Benefits.
Insurance and benefits.
So it means we're spending more with less on students?
Other towns are splitting between town and school.
So if we were.
We're allocating.
What were we, what were we 50% below on? We were 50%.
State aid.
It was a combination of chapter 70 and circuit breaker, the total state aid.
So, but this is chapter 70 per student. So what it is, is it's our, it's our circuit breaker.
We're not getting enough in circuit breaker.
Correct.
Can you go, we're all going to get this tomorrow, but can we just?
Can you ask me tomorrow? We'll be here all night.
I believe, actually, you and the public can see all of this right now. What I'll send tomorrow is, enables you to go in and.
I thought we weren't, I thought we weren't.
No, this is all the fault.
No, this is all the Nancy stuff.
We can't publish our own Nancy stuff.
It's all from Department of Education.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, the public can see this where?
Well, right now, it's posted on our website.
Right.
And we haven't, this is just the fault.
We're not like promoting it yet.
Right, this is just the fault.
I got, I got, all right.
It's out there.
Could you just, one last one, could you go see if there's like a, a special ed section or on expenditures?
There is.
Okay.
Where'd it go? What did I do?
I'm trying to find something, Nancy.
Yeah.
I escaped.
Let's see.
Hey, it went to the light.
Yeah.
I know.
21st century lighting.
Babe? How do I get it back?
Try, which one were you looking at?
Oh, maybe, was I? Sorry, sorry.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. So, special education, I believe, if I go back here, was under. So we have out of district and instructional services.
You have to take, you have to take one of the buttons down below. So view the expenditure detail.
Expenditure.
And then just scroll down.
And then hit, probably just click on the.
I think it just goes, so if you just scroll down.
Employee executives. So pupil services is special education. Oh, no, that includes food services, athletics.
Is the out of district, is that, is that specific?
24% higher. 24% higher than similar districts.
Includes in charter schools, school choice, out of district placements, assessments for regional schools and transportation for out of district students.
No, so we have tri-county and dark block ag. So it's not, so they don't just have.
Well, we do, and the NESTIC, I've, I've given you a copy and can provide it again. The NESTIC Special Education Trend Analysis gives us.
Have you break down under 58,000? Does it provide anything?
Tuition and assessments and transportation.
That includes vocational.
Yeah, right.
So on tuition and assessments and you view the breakdown, can you?
Yeah, I bet you can click that maybe.
Transportation out of district.
So that's on us. Because we don't, we don't provide transportation for the evoke or.
Right, do you have to break down a special education?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's on us.
Can you click on the number, just about the 30%?
Tuition in Massachusetts schools, non-public schools and collaborative.
Whoa.
The collaboratives, that's.
That's all special ed.
The non-public schools?
So we should pay the collaborators for, for residents students.
Can you scroll down a little?
So we're spending 71%.
And 24% more than the non-public.
20% lower.
I think, I think the tuition of mass schools, that would be the tech in the act.
Non-public schools for resident students.
Jody does that report every year. The non-public is vocational.
So we spend 24 less on that of 71%.
How, how are the public high schools non-public?
Those are charter schools, aren't they?
Yeah, if you go down a little bit.
No, that's the private schools. You go down more screen, go back one sec.
But we don't pay tuition to private schools.
Charter schools, right?
Do they know where our students go?
Public is charter schools, right?
Yes.
That's what they're doing.
No, because we don't.
No, we're reporting.
I don't think so.
Can you go all the way down?
Yeah, go all the way down.
Tuition non-public, tuition in mass.
What's that, what does that, what's a small thing say?
That says, different groups attending non-member collaboratives and non-member regional school districts. And schools payments made for charter school students and school choice students. So that's vogue.
That's the vogue in that.
And regional.
What is the, what is the, what is the thing, the descriptor saying under the one right above that? The non-public.
Tuition or transfer payments to non-public schools for resident students.
That's charter.
That, so our special education students who are out of district, there are two. They can go to a collaborative program or to a private school. So I think this must be special education out of district, private.
And this is special education collaborative.
Which is a lower cost for us.
But we're spending 71% more than every other district.
But 24% lower on private. So more of our special education students are going to collaborative programs versus private, which is a cost savings to the district. But if we could keep them in district, like we're developing the preschool kindergarten program, then it, it helps. So there's a tremendous amount of information.
So we can, we'll have this, you can look at it starting tomorrow. Or, I mean, we can look at it now, you know, as of tonight, but people can start doing their own stuff tomorrow. Thank you. We don't have anything time in learning. Chairman's report, the only thing I want to mention is just next week, the 29th, we presented to the Finance Committee the budget. They were provided or made available to books to them last Friday. I sent an email to the Chair and the Vice Chair today asking that if they have a set of questions or an initial set of questions that will help facilitate the initial dialogue, that we get those in advance. And, I mean, obviously, it's not, doesn't mean there won't be more questions, but it was always helpful to have an initial set. That's all I got. And then the, the only other thing, Subcommittee Reports, Elementary School Building Committee. Before you guys come out, I'll just touch on the email we got today where there's potentially a move in town meeting to the 22nd of March.
What?
Of May.
I thought, I thought we were told that we can't move town meeting. Shocked and chagrined.
Has, have we gotten a response from anybody about whether this has an impact if we don't have the vote on May 8, May 8, other than the fact that residents have already been given that date as a hard and fast date, have made and begun to make plans for being able to attend or not attend that kind of thing? Is there any?
So the update that we have, so we did get an update. The update we have is this. Part of what the Elementary School Board Committee has already approved is an allocation to the designers to continue their work to allow us to still target that November groundbreaking date, assuming that the project gets approved. The Board of Selectmen also have to approve that funding allocation. It's not additional funds to the town, it's part of the million dollar feasibility study. It's moving money from one bucket to another, which is required to have approval by both the ESBC and the Board of Selectmen in order for it to move forward. If the Board of Selectmen were to approve that request, then we believe that that two-week move from the 8th to the 22nd would not have an impact on timeline.
Would we need to spend additional money if the meeting was on the 8th? I know it's already allocated or part of the million.
As a special, if we were to have a special town meeting on the 8th? Or if we left it as is?
If we were to, if we were going to, if the vote happened on the 8th as it was supposed, as it's supposed to, would we, so the idea that we need to extend or give people extra time and this, this piece of the Selectmen would have to approve it. I understand it's already within the million dollars that was voted. Is it money that doesn't have to be spent?
It has to be spent whether the meeting is on the 8th or whether the meeting is on the 22nd. It needs to be spent in both scenarios.
In order to make the November groundbreaking, we have to spend that money. Regardless of when town meeting is. That's another issue, the town.
No, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, like, did we, are, if the meeting is on the 22nd, are we extending the time or extending hours or do, so this is, so then why do we need, then why do we need a vote to, to spend that money by the Board of Selectmen?
Because they're moving it from one bucket.
It's a move of how the budget money was initially set as far as the buckets are concerned, so the breakdown of the money. So we're taking money that was contingency money and moving it into a design bucket. The MSBA requires the town, both the committee and the Board of Selectmen, to approve any moves between across buckets.
So in order to accommodate the extra two weeks, we have to spend contingency money that we otherwise would not have to spend.
No. We have to spend that money regardless of whether the meeting is on the 8th or the 22nd.
You say the meeting, you mean the election.
The town meeting. The town meeting is on the 8th.
When is the, when is the vote?
On the 1st.
Oh, okay.
So there's a little more, so if the Selectmen authorize the $100,000 spend, spend for worksite and if they authorize us to apply for set us as a construction manager at-risk project, so there's the two parts. As long as the Board of Selectmen approves that, we can keep everything on track for that groundbreaking in the fall and eventually opening fall 2019.
So if the town meeting is moved, they would, the Selectmen need to approve this $100,000 shift in the budget, otherwise they cause a delay.
The Selectmen have to be moved no matter what.
So we're, we're going up for, we're going up for approval of that move of money for a May 8th meeting as well. So as it stands today, this is on the Board of Selectmen's agenda for approval at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which I believe is next Monday.
Next Monday night.
At next Monday night's meeting.
It's a little caveat. So if someone says to us, by delaying town meeting two weeks, can you move forward with the project as planned? Yes. But no matter what you do, you have to approve these, the construction at risk of the $100,000 or we can't move forward with the timeline we proposed.
Contingent on the Board of Selectmen approval of shifting funds in the budget.
Because if they don't, if they don't shift those funds, not only do we, we blow the timeline, we also will incur more cost or potential because they, they, we really, we got the budget down being very, you know, we didn't, we're, we're missing or reducing escalation cost because we're starting as soon as, literally. If they don't shift those funds, not only do we, we, we blow the timeline, we also will incur more cost or potential, because they, they, we really, we got the budget down being very, you know, we didn't, we're, we're missing or reducing escalation cost because we're starting as soon as literally possible. So there, there's implications, but the, the, the date of the town meeting does not impact, it's really the vote next Monday on those two issues. Construction manager at risk and the moving of the hundred thousand, which is not additional money.
So if the vote was held on May eighth. Is there a potential that we wouldn't have to spend some of that money?
No.
No.
No, either way, it's.
We're spending, we're spending the money to hit the November date. So, so that money is being, that money is being spent by the designers to continue to do their work so that we can break ground in November.
Mr. Chair, if, I, I think the bigger issue here is, we should have a meeting on May eighth as scheduled, because this should be a special town meeting. The board of selectmen chose not to pursue a special town meeting, I was vehemently opposed to it, I was there, I expressed my concern, it's their, it's their decision. We should have, based on the community forums, the amount of questions that are rising up on Facebook, in emails, and in a two and a half hour community forum on Saturday, that Ms. Hall was there and you were there for a part of that. The idea that we're going to put a, a thirty mil, actually, we're, we're allocating fifty-one million, a fifty million dollar project into what could be thirty to forty, maybe fifty agenda items, and try to have a fifteen to twenty minute conversation is doing a huge disservice to the voters and the residents of this town.
So I, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree, but that battle is lost. So the, the. No, the, the battle of, are they going to set a special town meeting specifically for that?
Circumstances have changed.
They have. The question is, if, so I agree, I think that, and I would recommend it, whether it's this committee or the elementary school building committee, I would recommend that there's a request made of the board of selectmen that if, that the, the meet, that there be a meeting on May eighth that votes on the school building. If because of circumstances outside of anything to do with the school building project, they're unable to hit the budget timeline for an operating budget to be able to make a, a vote of the rest of the warrant articles, and they need to postpone or adjust for that. I don't think it should hold up doing the vote on May, on May eighth. So one avenue is to merely make the request to do that, the other avenue is that two hundred people sign a petition and, and ask for a special town meeting, of which the board of selectmen would then be compelled to call within forty-five days. Just so happens that forty-five days prior to May eighth is this Friday, so, no, they have to call it within forty-five days, so.
Sometime after Friday, put the petition forth.
Exactly, Friday or later, if the petition was put forth, May eighth would fall in that window of forty-five days.
Mr. Chair, when do we know for sure if the town meeting is Friday or Wednesday?
I don't know. My guess, my guess is it will, I would hope that it would be part of their agenda on Monday night and they would make a final decision, because there are a number of things that would be impacted. If they delay any longer than that, I mean, May, May eighth, I mean, they've gotta have things done, things, the print's gotta go by May first at a minimum, if not two weeks earlier, I mean, the, the reality is, they don't have a revenue number. They have, the finance committee and even the board of selectmen have no ability to make their own decisions, we have no idea where we stand in terms of an operating budget. I mean, the, the, the simple fact is, is that there's almost not enough, there's, there's borderline not enough time as of now to get through all of this stuff. If they're not, if they don't have it until next week, they're talking about basically giving the finance committee two weeks and everybody two calendar weeks to get all the budget recommendations, everything done in order to hit, going to, going to print in the required two-week timeframe that they need to do. I would argue they probably should have made this decision two weeks ago, if they knew that this is where they were gonna be. But absent all that, the school building project, in my opinion, has two options. The first is to make the request next Monday night that this meeting still be held on May eighth for this vote. And if that's denied, or maybe concurrently with it. Petition is done requesting a meeting on May eighth.
What's the likelihood that we get a, a, a decision within the next couple of days? Isn't someone going on vacation with them, everyone on the email?
I didn't, I didn't notice that.
Somebody's leaving tomorrow, I just, I just.
Suzanne Kennedy's last day is tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So after tomorrow, we don't have, there is no, the town administrator position is vacant as of tomorrow until March thirty-first. The select, I, I, the selectmen are not meeting this week. They had two meetings scheduled that were canceled.
Nothing urgent, I guess.
They were, well, they were struggling to get.
Oh, yes, 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 I know, what you're saying.
So I think the earliest that they're gonna meet is Monday.
Hopefully we can.
So, those are the options for dealing with the.
We'll bring those back to the ESBC, we've started those conversations already.
I just have to say, ideally, special town meeting should be before the election to inform the committee, but we've all sort of, we've all stepped out.
We've all stepped out too.
We've clearly heard, clearly, a compass that's worked on tons of these projects, that a special election happens before a special town meeting, and both of those typically happen with a big project like this. I just have to say that out loud.
Yep. So, okay, any other school building committee update?
Five week, not much going on. Last week, we, we presented to the board of selectmen, presented to the FinCom, we published very well-written, frequently asked questions, which I think were very elaborate. We then, there was a presentation at the, the police station community room on Saturday. And then over the course of the week, several questions came in over Facebook, several questions, uh, questions came from the board of selectmen, raised at FinCom, so there was a, a second version of the frequently asked questions published today. And that solicited more questions, which we are now working on timeframes, I know we're gonna be answering these questions, but we will answer any and all questions and talk to as many people as necessary, so. It is clear that the project is out there and people know about it, and, um, as a rule, I think the questions that are being asked are legitimate, and I think that they're thoughtful questions, and, um, the more questions are asked, the more we can provide, and hopefully, the goal of, of the elementary school building committee is to make sure that every resident in town, anyone who goes to the, to the, to the polls or to town meeting is informed. Or had the ability and had access to material to be informed, and I think that's what we're striving for, and I think we're making good progress on that.
The only thing I would add is on Monday morning, we'll be going to the council of aging to do a presentation to that group and then stay and answer questions that they might have. Monday night, we are in front of the board of selectmen, we've asked them to endorse the project, so they will be taking that vote on camera Monday night. Um, the finance committee, we've asked them as well, as a follow-up to the presentations that were made last week, we've also asked the finance committee for an endorsement vote of the project as well, which will happen next Wednesday night.
And then lastly, uh, next Tuesday, at the state house, there is a public hearing on our Article ninety-seven landslaw. So I'm gonna go and monitor the public hearing, I don't know if anyone else will be there, but we are, once it goes through the public hearing, there's a timeframe, Representative Linsky, Ross, and Representative Dooley have been very, um, very supportive of the project, they're very supportive of the town, and they're doing whatever they can to get this thing, um, passed prior to whenever we have our town meeting, and whenever we submit to the MSBA, not whatever, we're submitting on May tenth.
Is there a time on next Tuesday?
I, I wanna say it's eleven o'clock, it's either ten or eleven, I, I'll let you know, I don't, I don't know, but it's Tuesday morning.
And we're submitting this week, we're submitting to the MSBA this week, they're, they are formally doing their vote on May tenth.
That's right, that's correct.
Mr. Chair, there's one question that's come up a couple of times, and so we wanted to chat about it just in the school committee, it's related to extended day, and in the new facility, if we would charge extended day, which is a self-sustaining program, we would charge them for using space within, um, fly ground. And I guess those funds could be used to differentiate some of the added costs related to maintenance or, you know, a number of items, just wanted to open that up for conversation and open session.
I mean, I think it's a conversation worth having, I think if it's, it would be physically within the building, we would potentially adjust it and be more like preschoolers now, where, you know, maybe we allocate costs, maybe we have them pay us rent, we'll figure something out.
Right, so the proposal is that there's one room that's dedicated to extended day, because there is a program that happens for the really young children during the day, um, and that space allows us swing space, um, which is a nice benefit to, if we have a, a big boom in population. Classrooms are already able to handle twenty percent more in enrollment, but that's another space that could be used at some point, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to coming up with, I think, as a fair and reasonable number, I, I would not want to be in a position where we're raising tuition cost to cover, in, in the existing budget, I believe this year, we're paying off the modulators, so there has been money allocated each year towards payment for, or rent, or the lack of better term, a mortgage on the modulars, so I, I think it's the fair thing to do, but I wouldn't want to put us in a position where we are now pricing people out of legitimate, um, care for their kids pre and post-school. I think we, we can come up with a fair price, but I don't know.
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, between now and May first and May eighth, we're not gonna have another, I think the best that we can say is it'll be evaluated at the time, and I think that's, well, I think that's the best we can do.
Could, can, can the modulators, ultimately, if this was something we did down the line and the modules were freed up, we could use that for the stem that we've been talking about for so long? A steam, we're gonna add the outs, right?
We know that incorporates the building.
Really like those modulars, so.
Say again?
There are other town departments that would like those modulars, so if we want them, we need to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, absolutely, I mean, that's something we, we, we wanted to do, right?
Repurpose, we could repurpose the mo, I mean, we can repurpose.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it, it would be owned, it's ours, there's no.
I mean, we're lacking for space up here, even if we go back in the fifth grade and if a new building does pass and the fifth grade goes back, we still always spoke about doing additional things that we don't have the space for, even if the fifth grade went back, so why not utilize that if we can? I mean, you know, there's science, there's could be arts, there could be whatever, mobile libraries.
Booking, it could be any number.
Yeah.
So just, people have asked if the school committees had that conversation, and we haven't been able to say yes, so I think it's important that we can now say, yes, we've had those conversations, and it's something we would consider, but we need to learn a lot to make a final determination.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the extended day program does currently so, um, help, uh, or they are charged for some, or they pick up the cost for some custodial and nurse, um, the services that they use and some space. So there, um, it, it would not be a deviation from the current practice to continue that practice.
That's a good tip, thank you.
Uh, we don't have anything for correspondence, school committee announcements, anybody? All right, no old and new business, we do not have executive session, um, next meeting date, we propose the fourth and twenty-fifth.
Oh, is that, that's your suggestion?
Because of April vacation, if, um, April vacation falls.
Two weeks from today and then the week before the election.
So we could, um, if, if we have the meeting on the twenty-fifth, two weeks prior to that would be the eleventh, or we could have three weeks in between, either way.
Three weeks now or three weeks?
Later.
In April.
The ele, the next forum is the thirteenth of April, so if we met the eleventh, that's right before that, I mean, what's next, what's the next agenda item, what's the next issue we have to deal with on the fourth? You mean, what's pressing coming down?
Hopefully we'll have some budget revenue numbers.
Yeah. That's a big lift.
Well, why don't we set the fourth, set the twenty-fifth? If we can evaluate over the next week, if, if we think that there's not much we can do on the fourth and we'd be better off waiting till the eleventh, we can do that.
So the fourth and the eleventh, fourth and the twenty-fifth, then we may adjust depending on the town's revenue. Mr. Chair, Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you all very much, have a good night.